The time is now 7:02 PM. We will reconvene into open session. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. Friendly reminder, the meetings of the board are open to the public, but not meetings of the public. UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The board does receive the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allow us to ask and receive questions to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item. But as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present to maintain decorum. Respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item is our Pledge of Allegiance. If I could have everyone please rise.
First, the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which you stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now to the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If your name's standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Next, we have commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan.
Thank you so much. We all know that UMBLE ISD has the absolute best employees in the state of Texas and well beyond. It's important to us that our dedicated staff be provided with the very best healthcare options available. I'm proud of Chief Financial Officer Mike Seal and Billy Beatty, Director of Business Systems Payroll and Benefits, for their work this summer, in the midst of COVID, by the way, to ensure that our UMBLE ISD employees have additional insurance options. Tonight's Inspiring Moments video tells us the story.
Healthcare. It has to be the hottest topic in the news today. It's just become too confusing and expensive, and it shouldn't be that hard or costly to receive quality healthcare. I myself get frustrated when I try and schedule a doctor's appointment and I have to worry about networks, and then sometimes I have to wait three, four weeks to see the doctor, and after it's all said and done, I have no idea how much it's even going to cost. UMBLE ISD recognized these issues, and we were able to deliver a solution this year. Thanks to Dr. Fagan and the board, we amended our District of Innovation Plan, and we were able to build and offer the new UMBLE ISD Alternative Health Plans. One of my favorite features of the new health plan are the District Health and Wellness Clinics. These clinics are designed to simplify the process. They provide the convenient, affordable, and personalized quality healthcare that UMBLE ISD staff and their families deserve.
We want to be the hub of your healthcare. We can be your primary care provider, or work with your primary care provider, and any specialists that you have as well. The main goal is to keep your health on track.
If our teachers are healthy, they will devote their time and energy into their teaching. They don't take time off frequently, and they feel happier, healthier, to spend more time with students, and the quality of teaching will be enhanced from that.
How can we effectively manage our health and well-being if we don't even know what's going on with our health and well-being?
Part of keeping your health on track involves detecting issues when they're small before they become large and life-changing events.
I really hate to admit it, but I have to be pretty sick to go into the doctor's office. But when we opened this clinic, I sat down for a couple tests, just did a photo op, and I was pretty surprised by the results I got back. So the next day, I scheduled an appointment, and I'm so grateful that I actually completed those tests, because with that information, I was able to address those issues, and I know that I have made a very positive impact on my long-term health.
I decided that after I heard that we had a free clinic for UMBLE ISD staff, that I would finally be able to come in and see a doctor. I'm very bad at doing that, but Care ATC has made that easy for me. I called and was in an appointment within a couple of hours. I've been seen by a doctor. I have a PCP now. Everything has been smooth sailing through this clinic, and I'm just glad, as an UMBLE teacher, that I have access to this now. This is just a perfect stop for me to be able to get my husband taken care of, my family taken care of, and something that I'm bad at, getting my self-care as well.
These clinics only exist to support UMBLE ISD staff and their families. Obviously, come out to the clinics when you're sick, but don't hesitate to just get a checkup and take control of your health and wellness.
In the middle of COVID, a lesser team would have said, you know, maybe we can do this next year. Maybe now's not the time. This is a lot of work to completely reinvent the healthcare options in UMBLE ISD, to open clinics that are exclusively for our employees, to take away co-pays and to take away prescriptions for generics, the costs, if you are on this particular plan. And so I really think it is incredible that Mike Seal and Billy Beatty continued forward in the midst of everything else, that we were absolutely reinventing everything that we were doing, everything we were thinking about, completely uncertain times, spending millions of dollars on COVID expenses. They pushed forward, and the results have been astounding. If you haven't been to the clinic and you are on one of those plans, you will be amazed at the quality of the service, no wait, no cost, the quality of the care, and every aspect of it. It is exactly what every UMBLE ISD employee deserves as far as reduced premiums, no co-pays, and no cost for generics if you're on that plan. So I could not be more proud of the work that they have done. It is complete innovation in healthcare, long overdue, and what an absolute benefit to our employees. So thank you. I'm going to ask them to stand, Billy and Mike. Please stand and be recognized. Your efforts are appreciated by thousands of people, and we want you to know it. So thank you so much. Next, our staff members go above and beyond for students, just like that, all the time. At this time, Ms. Jerry Monbarren, Director of Community Development, is going to introduce our superstaffers.
To meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. This month's sponsor is Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union, and joining us tonight is Julia Arsno. Please join me in thanking Gulf Coast for sponsoring tonight's awards. Being honored as the elementary superstaffer is Selena Greff from Lake Shore Elementary. Come on and join us up here, Selena. And Net Neverman, her principal, is joining us in the crowd. So let me tell you a little bit about Celine. Celine is the attendance specialist for Lake Shore Elementary. She has done a fabulous job keeping all of our face-to-face and online students straight throughout our year of COVID. She never complains and is a silent warrior in making sure records, students, attendance, and staff stay on track and are accounted for. She goes the extra mile, and with a smile on her face, she is a blessing to Lake Shore Elementary. Congratulations, Celine. Okay, while they're taking those pictures, I'm going to go on to the secondary superstaffer. It's Kevin Jack, the physical education teacher at Ross Sterling Middle School. Okay, so let me read to you a little bit about Coach Jack. D'Amico Bartley, first of all, he's the principal of Ross Sterling. He's in the audience, too. Proud principal there. So Coach Jack has been doing an amazing job with the boys in PE classes and our football team. His seventh-grade team is currently undefeated, and this is largely due to his energy and passion to see his athletes succeed. He arrives before 7:00 AM and leaves late in the evening after everyone is gone. Coach Jack is the epitome of a coach's coach. He has deep compassion for the kids and uses every interaction with them as a teachable moment. And he does this while also managing being a husband and father of three toddlers. We are so glad to have him on our team. Congratulations. Being honored as the support superstaffer tonight is Maria Mendez, head custodian for the administration building. Maria has a lot of fans in the room tonight. Mrs. Maria Mendez is the head custodian for the administration building and has been with UMBLE ISD for over 10 years. She's an extraordinary employee who goes above and beyond to meet the needs of all the building staff and is very flexible with last-minute changes. Maria is a perfectionist, and she pays close attention to detail. She is a very thoughtful and kind person, always greeting everyone with a smile. We appreciate Maria for always putting forth her best for others. Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations to all of our superstaffers. There is not enough awards in UMBLE ISD for that. Tonight, the board has a commendation award. Our board president, Mr. Sidon, is going to present this award.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Back in 2013-2014 school year, the board was interested in exploring something new, broadcasting our school board meetings over the internet. But there was a challenge. The district didn't have the capacity at the time to take on a new project, and the technology was relatively new. After all, YouTube had only existed since 2005, and the YouTube Live did not launch until 2011. Nevertheless, in the 2013-14 school year, the board wanted to try it out. We checked pricing from various technology vendors, and the cost was substantial. Our good friend and community partner, Bert Brocker, heard about our discussion and stepped forward to say his company, Texan Live, could livestream board meetings at no cost to the district. Trustee Keith Lopez was quoted at a school board meeting saying this about Bert's offer. "We are spending taxpayer dollars here, and free is pretty hard to beat." Naturally, I couldn't agree more. From 2014 to 2020, we have depended upon Texan Live to livestream our board meetings. This service has been done at no cost to the district. UMBLE ISD district staff now have the capacity and technology to livestream our board meetings, and this responsibility was taken on beginning this summer by the district's Public Communications and Technology Services Departments. I'm going to break script for a second, if that's all right. Not only did Bert step in with Texan Live and start doing our board meetings, he's also been doing, well, he was doing our football games as well. Now, his company has really taken off. But he's also done our graduation ceremonies, free of charge, to our school district. These are things that prior to HB3 and other legislative sessions where videoing board meetings became mandatory, this was something that we felt very, very felt needed to happen, you know, for transparency in the work that we do as a board and for our community. And we just really didn't know how to get it done, and Bert stepped in and has been a huge, huge community partner for so many years. So therefore, tonight, we thought it'd be appropriate to express our appreciation to Bert Brocker, the head coach, for six years of providing free livestreaming of board meetings and graduations. Bert, you have provided a very valuable community service, and on behalf of each and every trustee who has served in the past six years, we thank you. I am now going to ask Rusty Odom, who leads multimedia operations for athletics in our school board meetings, to share a few words.
So I really appreciate Bert showing up tonight and being a part of this. I have a script here that I'm going to kind of follow and read a little bit as well, but Bert and I, we kind of got in this together. Bert leaned on me a lot, and since then, I've leaned on Bert quite a bit for things. As Mr. Sidon said, everything from Ted Landry on the roof to pep rallies to you name it, we ask Bert, and Bert delivers. He actually first started at Turner Stadium. That was where he started doing football games. They since branched out. They do all our games that they possibly can do, as well as games all over the area. They continue to livestream all our games, and really, they work out any solution that we try, that we ask them to help us with. I can't tell you the amount of parents, families, people around the country that tell us that they're grateful that they can watch their kids participate in events at UMBLE ISD, especially graduation, and especially this past year, where we made it all happen at Turner Stadium. In the pandemic, livestreaming has become a part of our lives, and Bert really makes that happen for all of us. And Texan Live Service has helped our community to be there for our kids, and we're very proud and grateful to be a partner with TexanLive.com. Congratulations, Bert.
Thanks, Bert. We appreciate everything you've done for UMBLE ISD. I know the Texan Live piece has been huge for us, but he has also been a fantastic contributor to our foundation and to many other events throughout his tenure and presence in the community. So he's a guy that we could always call and say, you know, we're thinking this, and he'd say, yeah, we could do that. And we certainly appreciate everything he does for us. So thank you. And that concludes our commendations and all of that rewards.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. So moving on to our next item of business, questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from the district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of the group, may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents by resolution cannot be achieved administratively. The person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. Looks like we have a couple folks joining us via video conference. Our first speaker will be Sean Cosme. Oh, he's not on. All right. Our next speaker, also on video conference, Lakeisha Moreno. Also not with us. I do not see any other people signed up to speak, so let's move on to comments by individual board members. We'll start to my left, Ms. Toomey. Switching it up a little bit.
Switching it up a little bit. So I just want to, you know, I know we've already recognized, but Mike and Billy, thank you so much for all your hard work on the Alternative Health Plan and the clinics. That is truly an amazing accomplishment. I remember when I first came on the board a year and a half ago, and just sort of the discussions about what could we even do, and just seeing what has been done in such a short amount of time is really an amazing accomplishment, and thank you guys both again. And then I just want to, you know, I guess really also say, you know, thank you to the administration. I'm heading off for the Leadership Tasby. I leave tomorrow for our first in-person session. We're going to be visiting Navarro ISD in the San Marcos area to learn a little bit about what they do and how they operate, and just thank you for allowing me to be a part of that.
Thank you, Ms. Toomey. Now to my far right, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the votes that I regret probably the most as a board member is when we moved from our private plan back, way back when, to go on the state plan, and Dave Martin was, I think, the lone dissenter. Maybe you, Mr. Scarfo, other than you two? Yeah, but it was Dave Martin was a loud, loud voice saying, we shouldn't do it, but we saved money, I think, the first couple of years, and then it became a disaster. And we've been looking for a way out ever since. And Mike, you and your team, just thank you so much for doing that finally. And so now we have another plan that we control to help our employees, and so thank you and your team for doing that. So now I guess I'm redeemed somewhat, or at least we made that bad mistake. We're trying to undo it, and that's a good thing. Other than that, those are my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And before I go to Ms. Morrison, Mr. Anglotti sent his regrets. His mom is not doing well, and he's helping take care of some family issues. So, Ms. Morrison.
Well, again, I want to say thank you, Mike, and thank you, Billy, so much. Being a former teacher, how nice it would have been years ago if we had had a clinic to go to, because no one really knows how, sometimes even in all of our busy schedules, how nice it is to be able to get in right after school or to take our kids, so we don't have to sit and wait so long. So just a huge, huge thank you for that. And also, just congratulations to the superstaffers. They are a few and many to be more, but thank you for all the work that you do, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say hello to some of our guests this evening for joining us. And I also want to just, again, I know we all do this every meeting, because it's something we should, to thank Dr. Fagan and all her staff throughout the district, from the administration, the senior administration, to the building principals, all the staff at the campuses, and everyone who supports them. Because if you look at our metrics, from everything from ADA to, you know, our daily attendance, to increase in enrollment overall, and a very small number of lost students, if you compare to what's going on with other districts, it's night and day. So I don't know how you're quite doing it all. I mean, I know you keep us up to speed on a lot, but there's some magic there, because you guys are just doing an outstanding job, and you really all should take a bow. And I just want to thank you all again, and I'll keep doing that, too, because you guys are doing just a great job. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Congratulations to all the superstaffers, and thank you to Bert Brocker. And also, thank you, Billy and Mike. I know as an educator, it is truly a benefit to have, for our staff to have an affordable healthcare plan, and I appreciate all of the work that you both did on that. And last, I would like to thank Kingwood High School, Ms. Schilling and Ms. Adelman for organizing, inviting me to be a panelist on the KHS Civic Engagement Webinar. I was on the panel alongside with Dr. Nazra and wonderful Student Council President, Ally Bates, Student Council Treasurer, Sanjay Patel, and another student, Hamat Jahann. It was a wonderful experience hearing students share about civic duty and what that means to them. So I would just want to say thank you for including me on the panel. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamond Dixon. All right. So I, too, want to welcome some special guests. We have members of the Sconzo family, Ms. Diane Sconzo and their son, and I apologize, I am drawing a total blank. So, Michael, I apologize for that. I just drew a blank there. And then also, some former employees, you know, Ms. Young and Ms. Wolf, they worked really, really hard keeping this board out of trouble and keeping us in line, and we appreciate y'all. And I see Ms. Atwood back there, and if I miss someone, I do apologize. But thank y'all for being here tonight. We are glad to welcome y'all. Oh, Ms. Ors, okay. Couldn't tell with the mask on. I apologize, Janet. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate y'all. So I apologize for that. All right. So let's move on. And did Bert leave, I guess? I tell you, Bert has been a great, great partner, not just on UMBLE ISD, but to education in the Gulf Coast community, for the services that he's provided, and now has been able to turn that service into a legitimate business that does so well for so many, and we appreciate him for that. Mike and Billy, great job. I know this is something that we've been talking about for a long time, about benefits and really doing what's right for our staff, right for our family, and y'all nailed it. So we appreciate all y'all have done, and I'd be remiss if I didn't echo Mr. Scarfo's comments about Dr. Fagan and your team. You know, we read in the paper, we read on social media about school districts who are in dire straits because they are challenged with their ADA numbers. And when it comes to the things that we're doing in UMBLE ISD, not only is our ADA numbers stable, not only did we not lose students, but we gained 600 students. There are districts out there that have lost thousands, and if it weren't for TEA stepping in, they would not be viable institutions today because of that. So those of you that know anything about school finance, we get funding from the state at a certain percentage based on ADA, based on special ed, based on free and reduced lunch, and so forth. And there were districts out there that stood to lose millions and millions of dollars, and we were not in that situation. Because of the leadership of Dr. Fagan, her cabinet, and the work that everyone, the teachers, calling students, getting them in class, getting them to sign in virtually, et cetera. If it weren't for a collaborative effort across the board, we would not be in the shape that we're in today. So hats off to you and your staff, and thank you for all you do in the sleepless nights. And that's all I've got. Dr. Fagan.
Well, on behalf of all of us who feel like we've had four jobs since March 6th, we do appreciate your appreciation, and we're proud of the fact that our enrollment is up, our ADA is stable, and our free and reduced lunch numbers are up. And those all contribute to our overall financial health and picture, and it takes every single one of us, every single department, to be part of that. And when I was at the last leadership meeting, I went through all the different ones, whether it was curriculum instruction, professional development, you know, preparing teachers over the summer for Schoology and Google Classroom, CSOW, or whether it was RICS folks who are hiring and constantly looking for substitutes, and making sure that we had all of that in place. And accommodations, you know, the numbers of accommodations we've had this year, you know, a lot more, because we want to make sure everybody feels comfortable. Just department after department, department... Just department after department, department. There was no weak link. There was no ball that was dropped. There was no group where we said, oh gee, if only those guys, you know? It was everybody. Nolan has 14 major construction projects underway right this minute. You all know this, by the way, because you've been to all those groundbreakings. Yeah, you all have a collection of shovels now. But, and we, and we genuinely appreciate your time every single Friday, going to three different groundbreakings to catch up with our number of projects. But, you know, the reality of all of those projects being underway, under budget, completely innovative and state of the art, is really impressive during a time when Nolan and his team were moving, you know, HEPA air filters out, PPE equipment, replacing filters, replacing water fountains with bottle fillers, and making sure that every single proactive safeguard was in place, kept, kept everything going forward. And so I could go through every single different leader in here and, and share those kind of examples. But the end result is the positive example that is UMBL ISD, right? When other superintendents say, please send a letter to TEA about the need to hold us harmless for longer, and UMBL, you can sit this one out. That's a good feeling for us. It's a lot of hard work, and we see a lot of students who, you know, we've had to work hard this year, and our staff has had to work exceptionally hard to juggle new attendance policies, virtual students, in-person students, students changing from virtual to in-person on back and forth. You know, there's just been a lot, and every single person has risen to the occasion. And that is the staff that we have, and we're very proud of them. And that is why the sort of innovation that Billy and Mike bring to the table to make their quality of life better is so important. We want to make sure that they know how important they are to us, and that COVID or no COVID, we're going to open clinics, we're going to have new insurance plans, and we're going to push the information out, and we're going to provide them something better than they had yesterday. And that's what we are going to continue to do to improve the quality of life for all employees in UMBL ISD. So thank you for your support in being innovative and thinking differently about things and taking risks, using District of Innovation, and all the ways that you have allowed us to push forward in, in special and unique ways to make our district set apart, and best for kids and best for employees. So thank you for your time, energy, all the groundbreakings. We do appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Now moving on to our next item, Board Associations and Committees. Let's start with Advocacy Committee, Ms. Toomey.
Nothing to report this time.
All right, Audit Committee, Ms. Morrison.
Yes, sir. You, you all should have a copy of your single audit report, which we'll review tonight. So, and then we'll meet again.
All right. Building and Planning, that would be me. So y'all should have received the minutes from our last Building and Planning meeting. We've got a couple of agenda items later in the agenda. But I'm excited to announce today, in reference to one of the, the discussions we had at last month's board meeting, as you know, it's a great time to be part of UMBL ISD, as Dr. Fagan's mentioned. We've held groundbreaking ceremonies the past three weeks in a row, eight construction projects, the North Transportation Center, the North Agriculture Science Center, the New Kingwood Middle School, Middle School 10, UMBL High School renovations, Quest Early College expansion and renovations, New Lakeland Elementary, and the Elementary 30. A lot going on, and that's why the board has scheduled our first board workshop for Tuesday, January 26th, for a bond community update. This board workshop meeting will provide an overview for the trustees and the public on what is being accomplished by bond 2018. The meeting will be held at 7:00 PM, January 26th, right here in the boardroom. And like all of our meetings, will be offered as a hybrid meeting so that people have the option to see it in person or online. We look forward to seeing all of you on our bond 2018 review. We talk about them every month, but this will be a, a nice, concise, consolidated meeting where we can show the progress on every project and, and hopefully compare what the voters approve versus where we're at in each one of those areas. And I'm excited about that. Now, this is, I'm going to throw a curveball at you. What I'd like to see in that, as well as the projects, if we could get a small discussion about, not necessarily discussion, but presentation about our, our bond funds and where we're at on that, and how much we have left to sell, that kind of thing. Because I know that we did a bond refunding that is saving the taxpayers roughly $4.7 million, and that's something that we need to shout at the rooftops. But also, what's left to sell? What are some other opportunities going forward?
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Perfect, thank you very much. That's Building and Planning. Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Nothing to report.
Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Mr. Sidon. I'm trying to go quick here. Everyone receive the minutes and the presentations from our finance committee. I know there was a lot of information, but it was a lot of great information that Mr. Seal and his team put together. So I hope you had a chance to look through it. You'll actually vote on one item. And I just want to just highlight, as we look at the FEMA reimbursement, we talked about it a little bit last month, but we've already got 11.1 million in. Another 3.2 is in transmission to the, transmittal to the controller's office, and TIDMS reviewing another 3.3. So we're pretty confident on all that. And then the, the balance, as that gets submitted, we're really have a high probability that's all going to happen. So we, we should collect all that. Great job by, by Mr. Seal and his team to make that happen. And we've talked a lot about the health plan, the, the new alternative plan. I'm glad that that has come back. It was tough when it went away, but it's back. So, you know, it's water under the bridge. But I just want to, we had a great presentation. Hopefully you guys were able to look at some of the detail that was presented, as we talked about, not just the plan, but the COVID testing and all that's going on. And I just want to tell you, Mr. Beatty put out a great presentation for us, the job that those guys are doing, his team, I tell you, hats off to them. It's just, he's made, again, more magic. I mean, I don't know how you guys do all this stuff, but I'm duly impressed. So Billy, thank you, Mike, for all that hard work. And the audit, as Ms. Morrison pointed out, we have that to, to vote on. And I don't want to, I guess I'm a somewhat of a, you know, finance accounting nerd, but I don't know if everybody always understands or, or what these guys get every year. It's just amazing. We got a clean audit report, not just on our statements, but because we're a government agency that takes federal dollars, there's, Ms. Morrison mentioned it, there's another audit that has to happen. It's called a single, a single audit. And that gets in really deep into your controls and how you comply with all the legal requirements of those federal, federal grants. And again, that was just clean as a whistle, that report, too. And again, they receive the ASBO award this year, that's 34 years running straight, and then the GFOA award, also for 34 years. There was a little gap in between at one point, I don't know why. But again, those are national honors that are bestowed on districts for meeting certain criteria. And I'll tell you, it's really important. I don't know if everybody realizes just how important. And it goes back to what Dr. Fagan was saying, that we can be in a position to do things because we're financially sound, because planning has gone on, and we do things more than just always have to have 25% of our operating budget put aside. But we do more than that, and that's the last item, and you guys all got to see that as far as our general fund balance, we call earmarks. And again, you know, voting on, on these, they're, they're non-binding, but at least it, it lets everybody know what, what we're thinking, what we need to do. And after a lengthy discussion, just so you, everybody on the board knows, that our, our committee, after discussing this at length with Dr. Fagan and Mr. Seal, agree with what they're proposing as far as these non-binding items, as far as moving money to different funds, you know, emergency preparedness, financial, fiscal contingency, you know, the list goes on. And you guys all got to see all that great detail. And just as Mr., to quote Mr. Seal, as he likes to say, that, you know, doing what we're doing as far as earmarking funds in different, to different places to worry about the future, you know, it's, so the community can understand, you know, we're not just doing this because we've got a lot of loose change floating around in our pocket. As he says, I like that, I like that quote, and it's true. There, there's a method to the madness here. And so I hope you guys will all look to support that. And the last item, again, great news with the, if you got, all the board got to see the detail on the COVID reimbursements, and that's, that's just going great. There's about $11 million that we spent, and I think we've already received about half of that in, in grant replacement. And we really think that the, the balance will also happen to come, come in so that it won't come out of our pocket directly. It'll be a share of some other funds that, you know, through federal and state grants will, will come back to us. So that's great. And again, though, that doesn't happen by, by just hoping. It's because of the great work that the finance team does in doing and going after these things. So I just wanted to just highlight some of those things. I know you guys will, will vote on, on some of the items, but great job. I mean, just getting, getting that recognition and, and from our external auditors, from national recognition groups, it's just great. And, and I think what we're doing with fund balance, as we're moving the funds around to prepare for the, for the future, and after this year, boy, I tell you what, I don't know. So anyway, thanks, Mr. Sidon, and I just want an update.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. Board Representation for the Education Foundation, Ms. Morrison.
Foundation is, is joining forces with our Lake Houston Family YMCA by having an online auction to coincide with both the Foundation's golf tournament and the Wise Dancing for a Cause event this Thursday. So check out the items on the Foundation's website. And when you win your bid, just know you are helping two great causes, both of which support our UMBL ISD students. Several of our campuses are in full annual fund campaign mode this semester. Whether it is a treasure hunt at Atascaceta Middle, or Matt Rose or at River, Riverwood having a field goal competition with students, our principals are coming up with creative ways to remind parents that a donation to their annual fund is a great way to show support for their school. And the best part about raising money through an annual fund, as opposed to other third-party fundraisers, is that 100% of the funds are donated back to the school. So that is an awesome way. So that, those are our two updates.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. One thing I failed to mention on the, the Building and Planning Committee, we had the folks come out and demonstrate the gates, the floodgates that we're going to be using at Kingwood High School. I know Ms. Toomey and Mr. Scarfo came out. Ms. Morrison and Ms. Lamond Dixon had already seen it. So I really appreciate them coming out and giving us another demonstration on how that's going to work, just another one of our programs in collaboration with FEMA, that we're going to hopefully create a safe environment that will last a lifetime in Kingwood. So with that said, we're going to move on to our action items and consent agenda. Bless you. As, as mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we get the agenda in, well in advance that we can read through and ask questions. Not hearing from any board members over the weekend, I assume that if you had any questions, you got those answered. So we'll go right on through our action items and consent agenda. So Ms. Toomey, item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. If you could read that back to us in the form of a motion.
I move that the board approved the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? That would be 6-0. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. All right. So consent agenda, item A, approval of minutes from the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Consent. Goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding 50,000 in the aggregate or 25,000 individually. Consent. Item C, budget transfers and amendments, including increases for COVID custodial supplies, fine arts, tent rental, facilities assessment, and the resolution of comments, commitments of fund balance. Consent. Bond fund transfers and amendments.
Pull.
All right, we'll pull that. Item E, tax refunds. Consent. Item F, approval of RFP number 2021-003, supplies, equipment, and services for students with disabilities. Consent. Item G, approval of RFP 2021-005-02R, general merchandise. Consent. Item H, approval of RFP 2021-007R, educational and curriculum subscriptions, internet web-based access, and software. Consent. Item I, approval of RFP 2021-009R, restaurant and catering services. Consent. Item J, tasby update 115, policy revisions, final action. Consent. Item K, general contractor selection for multipurpose rooms, group one. Consent. Item M, no, item L, item L, general contractor selection for the Kingwood and Kingwood Park High Schools Third Gym and CTE addition projects. Consent. Item M, general contractor selection for Phase 3 of the FEMA flood mitigation project at Kingwood High School. Consent. Item N, architect selection for updating the comprehensive facilities assessment and long-range facilities master plan, bond plan. Consent. Item O, architecture selection for Summer 2021 MEP and bipolar ionization projects at multiple campuses. Consent. Item P, change order number one, UMBL High School additions and renovations, Quest Early College. Consent. Item Q, deductive change order, Westlake Middle School. Consent. Ms. Toomey, if you'll read that consent back to us in the form of a motion, please.
I move to approve consent agenda items A through Q, exclusive of pulled item 5D.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor? 6-0. All right, so let's move back up. Let's pick up item D, which is bond fund transfers and amendments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Dixon, I believe you pulled that.
Yes, I just wanted to actually just bring attention to it, to say I'm extremely excited to see the bond fund transfers and amendments. I don't know, you know, if people in our community have had an opportunity to read that, but a lot of that is showing how we have had savings from projects and also unallocated bond funds, leading to a potential replacement of Northville Elementary School. And it's just exciting to see that, and I wanted to bring attention to it. I was expecting Mr. President here to mention it, Building and Planning, but that's fine, and that's all I have to say, just a compliment.
I was, I was holding those comments to later in the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, that's fine.
We're thinking the same thing.
No worries, no worries. So, all right, any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion. All those in favor? 6-0. All right, so now let's move into our action items.
Do we have a second on that motion? Because we violated Robert's rules of order.
We had a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Now it's 6-0. Scarfo. That's right. All right. Item 6A, action item, comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2020, and single audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2020, and awards for the year ended June 30th, 2019, with consideration of the independent auditor's report included in the comprehensive annual financial report. Mr. Scarfo touched on a lot of these, but we are ready to listen and learn.
Do we need a motion? Welcome to Whitley Penn.
Do we need a motion to go to the?
Yes.
Okay.
So I move to approve the independent auditor's report by Whitley Penn LLC, included in the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, for the year in June 30th, 2020. in the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, for the year end June thirtieth, 2020.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now you may present, and then we'll vote on it.
Mr. President and members of the board, good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you the results of the district's fiscal year 2020 financial statement audit and federal single audit. I can't tell you how excited I am as an auditor to listen to the excitement in Mr. Scarfo's voice about the audit. I feel he could get given this presentation tonight. Other members of the engagement team, in addition to myself, include Joey Killian, Andrew Genet, Patrick Simmons. They were the senior manager, senior associate, and associate on the engagement, doing a lot of the field work. Tom Peterson was the concurrent partner on the engagement. His role is one of quality control. He has over forty years of experience. He reviewed the district's comprehensive annual financial report, the single audit report, and key work papers in our audit file, and that's just a part of the firm's quality control process. The purpose of the audit is to issue an opinion as to whether or not the users of the financial statements yourselves, the community, and the other interested parties in the financial statements, whether or not they can rely on the information contained within the report as being materially correct. As external auditors, we can issue one of three opinions. They get worse as you go from right to left. I'm happy to report that our opinion on the district's financial statements is an unmodified opinion. That's otherwise known as a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can issue on a set of financial statements. Now, to get to where we are tonight, a lot of work went into this, took several, several months, both on on our part and on the district's part. Planning started back in in the springtime of 2020, the execution of our engagement letter, interim field work. Everyone knows the challenges that 2020 presented, and so that didn't, that included the audit as well, the financial statements, and working with Mr. Seal, Ms. Hamm, and their entire team and the entire district, really, because there's really not a department that we don't touch as as we go through the financial statement audit, as you'll see here in us in a moment. But during the interim field work phase of the audit, we focused a lot on internal controls. What are the processes in place, the procedures in place at the district that affect the financial statements? We do a lot of our compliance testing at this point. Once the fiscal year is complete, we return and perform year-end procedures that focus on the financial statements themselves. We obtain a variety of audit evidence in order to issue our opinion on the financial statements. Some of the areas that we touch, that we focus on in the audit are on this slide here. That includes HR payroll, that makes up a large portion of the district's budget, procurement, and accounts payable, that has to do with the services and goods that are procured with vendors, and of course, information technology, since IT supports a lot of these areas and processes. The district does collect its own taxes, so there's work we do in the tax office as well, to make sure that there's controls and procedures there, as well as the other revenue sources that the district receives, attendance, because it does affect state aid and that calculation. We do procedures in that area as well, and we focus on financial close and reporting in order to get where we are today. The first opinion that I'm going to present is our opinion on the financial statements, and so that one is unmodified, like I mentioned earlier. But in addition to saying that the opinion is unmodified, we also don't have any internal control weaknesses or deficiencies to report, nor did we identify any noncompliance. This time of year, we're presenting and preparing a lot of presentations like these, and that's not something we can always say. So I think kudos to the district and to the finance team in order to not only have an unmodified opinion, but also no findings, no instances of noncompliance that I'm having to report to you tonight. Because the district does receive federal awards and requires a compliance audit referred to as a federal single audit, we do have to go through a process to identify which programs we test as major programs in a fiscal year. This year, there were three major programs, Title One Part A, I'm sorry, Title One and Title, those first two bullets are related, they have the same CFDA number, and then the second bullet, third bullet on this list is COVID nineteen, the CARES Act, Esther Grant, which was a surprise to everyone this year. So that became a federal major program in the single audit. Again, our opinion over compliance as it relates to these major programs was unmodified. We didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in controls over these compliance requirements, nor did we identify any question cost or any noncompliance. So a clean report here as well. Over the next few slides, I'll go over some financial statement highlights. The statement in net position is the district's balance sheet, and so there's a page number reference if you want to flip to that page in the comprehensive annual financial report. So this financial statement is very similar to the private sector, the basis on which it's prepared, total assets and deferred outflows of the district on June thirtieth, 2020, because these are amounts at a point in time where 1.355 billion. The majority of that balance is going to be your cash investments, 459 million, and capital assets netted depreciation of 700 and 3.8 million. You have your liabilities and deferred inflows of resources of 1.3 billion. The majority of that balance is going to be your bonds outstanding and your unamortized premiums, and then you have your net pension liability and that OPEB liability. You've been reporting those balances for some time now. Those are financial reporting balances only. These aren't liabilities you will ever pay off. These are reassessed each year by actuaries at the state level. The district receive its receives its proportionate share and makes that adjustment in its financial statement. So overall, a net position of the district at the end of the fiscal year was 54.2 million dollars. General fund revenue for the year totaled 441 million. You can see over half is related to state aid, 222 million. The other 41% is property taxes, so that makes up well over 90% of the revenue in the general fund. There's other state funding related to on behalf benefit of revenue from the state, some federal funding of 5.6 million, and other local funding of 7.9. Your general fund expenditures are illustrated on this slide. 65% of that's going to be instruction and related services, that's 266 million. You have two items at 8% each, that's going to be facilities, maintenance, and operations, and instructional and school leadership of 34 and 30 million, respectively. Looking at the general fund's compliance to the budget, actual revenues exceeded budgeted amounts by 13.1 million, expenditures were under budget by 36 million. Overall, there was a decrease in fund balance of 3.4 million due to a transfer out of the general fund into the capital projects fund. There was an overall increase in expenditures compared to the prior fiscal year due to the implementation of the requirements of House Bill three and all the pay increases that went into effect in fiscal year 2020. Funding, fund balance for fiscal year 2020 ended at 203.8 million. That's broken down to a few different categories, unassigned fund balance of 102.3, that does meet your requirement of 25%, but there's also an amount called assigned fund balance that are amounts that are earmarked for for special purposes of 98.3 million, which is also a significant amount. So overall, the district is in a very good position fund balance-wise in the general fund. You can see here on this slide that the unassigned portion is roughly 91 days of general fund expenditures, which is right there in the range that it wants to be. TEA has indicators that look at these metrics to make sure that the district is in a good position, and so the district is is well positioned to earn maximum points for the in those first rating indicators. There's two other budgetary tables in the comprehensive annual financial report. The board does also approve budgets for the Child Nutrition Fund and the Debt Service Fund, so that their performance is illustrated on this slide. Actual revenues in the Child Nutrition Program were less than budgeted by 1.9 million. Expenditures were under budget by 2.7. Overall, in the Child Nutrition Program, fund balance decreased by 500,000. Ending fund balance is 5.1 million. In the Debt Service Fund, revenues exceeded the budget by $800,000, and actual expenditures were under budget by 5.6 million. Fund balance increased by 14.3 million, and the Debt Service Fund for an ending fund balance is 72.1 million. That seems like a large amount, but keep in mind that 45 days later, in the middle of August, the district has to make some large debt service payments, so you have to have that fund balance there. Overall, debt service for fiscal year 2021 is almost 71 million dollars. That's pretty much the fund balance that existed on June 30th, 2020. The next few slides go through some required communications I have to make to you. We reviewed the district's accounting policies, and they are in line with industry standards. The financial statements do include estimates, so because so they can change in the future. Some of the more significant estimates include those made related to state aid, revenue, and receivables, any allowances for uncollectible taxes, the useful lives of the district's capital assets, and then, of course, that last bullet is the largest estimate in your government-wide financial statements, the liabilities for pension and OPEB and related expense and deferred implode and outflows of resources. I'm happy to report that we didn't have any difficulties encountered in the in performing and completing the audit. We did have to be flexible, and we had to adjust to the way we normally do things, but the district was very accommodating, and we worked through it together. So I do appreciate their patience and cooperation through this entire process, because there's no way we'd be here tonight presenting this report to you otherwise. The TEA did allow a waiver for districts with the June 30 fiscal year end to submit the report later, and we do have a good number of clients that took advantage of that waiver. But as you know, we're here today on time submitting this report to you as if COVID never happened. So I think that speaks to the hard work of of the district and the Finance Department. We didn't identify any uncorrected or corrected misstatements to bring to your attention. No disagreements with management when it came to any accounting estimates or the application of any accounting principles. The last form of audit evidence we obtained is a management representation letter. It reads like a checklist, just to make sure nothing's occurred since we left the field or stopped performing audit procedures that might need to be recorded or disclosed in the financial statements. As far as we're aware, the district isn't consulting with any other accountants or auditors on any matter. And then the last bullet there is during the year, we may be asked questions or asked to provide guidance, but at no time do we feel the way we respond or our position on any matter is the reason why we're retained as the district's external auditors. So that completes my presentation. If there are any questions about the audit process or any questions on the reports, I'd be happy to take those questions at this time.
Any board member, any trustees have questions? Great report, as always. We appreciate y'all's partnership in this year after year. Anyone have questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you to Laura Hamm. She's back there in the back, and she is a huge part of this process. She's part of Mike Seal's team, and she has done a fantastic job since coming to UMBLE SD. So we we thank Billy, we're thanking Laura. That whole team is really well represented tonight.
All right, ditto on that. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? Six oh. All right. Next item, item six B, consideration and approval of the North Belt Elementary School rebuild project. Do I have a motion?
You sure do. I'm excited about this one. I move to include North Belt Elementary School rebuild project in the 2018 bond program.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All right, I'm going to start the conversation, though. So not unlike Bond 2008, we were able to take advantage of some economic conditions that really favored construction companies, favored school districts, municipalities. In the bid process, if you remember in the Bond 2008, we were able to build, I know one for sure, but I think two schools, if I'm not mistaken, from due to savings due to the recession. The bid process that we're going through right now has been very favorable, that increased our savings. North Belt Elementary is after Lakeland is our oldest elementary school, and then Foster after that. If you look at the facility study and you look at the metrics that was used as far as replacements, additions, renovations, et cetera, North Belt Elementary was really the next school in line, based on the amount of money we were going to need to put into North Belt to to bring it up to speed with the other schools in the district, not to mention the location and the size of the property. So early on in the process, we were able to purchase property to potentially relocate North Belt in the future. Well, that future has been escalated due to the opportunities that this economy has provided us. So the the administration, in conjunction with our support services group, Mr. Correa and his construction team are putting forth the escalation of the rebuild of North Belt Elementary School. The Building and Planning Committee looked at it, and we are unanimous with moving forward with this as a recommendation to the rest of the board. So Ms. Lamond Dixon or Ms. Morrison, would y'all you all have anything to add to that from committee?
I have nothing to really add, but I want to say very specifically, thank you to Mr. Correa, Mr. Hadley, Mike Seal, Liz, and Dr. Fagan, sorry. Just it has been an interesting journey, this whole bond process and the allocation of funds. So for me, I don't know, I don't even know, you know, my kids didn't go to North Belt, but it's very near and dear to my heart that we are moving forward on this project.
Ms. Morrison?
I just want to say a huge kudos to Nolan in his department and Mike in his department in how well the the funds have been managed. Every time, every time we met with Building and Planning, we were given more information on where we saved a dollar, and and it means so much. And like Mrs. Dixon, I mean, my kids didn't go to North Belt, I didn't teach at North Belt, but it is very near and dear because a lot of my friends taught there. And it is, it's been there for many, many years, and it is such a, you know, a strong part of our community. And for it to get a new building is exceptional. And I just want to, I want to compliment all of your staff and how well and Dr. Fagan and her crew working, but going through all the processes and learning it. But just hu, a huge thank you, because this is so needed for our community and so needed for those kiddos, and thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Any question?
Mr. Scarfo.
Yeah, and maybe Dr. Fagan could address this, but I I think, yeah, North Belt, absolutely. I've been there a number of times and no question about that. My only question would be, is it in more dire straits than Foster Elementary? And is it just, what was the thinking of the prioritization of why we're doing that one as opposed to the other, which I think also, as we all said, is on the list? And and North Belt wasn't going to happen either, as far as going ahead, but because of all the competition on bidding and all the savings that happened, we can do something. So I'm just just ask the the thought process, why that one this time and not the other?
Sure. Well, we expected, as you know, because you know, you were there, the bond study committee brought forward this package, and we expected both North Belt and Foster Elementary and likely Ross Sterling Middle School to be in the next bond, knowing that those are our older facilities that are unlikely to be renovated to a point of creating equal educational opportunities for all students. Foster Elementary School, you know, Diane, who's the principal there, she always says she loves that building. It's like the little old lady of the district, she says. And Foster really is, it's a, it feels spacious as a campus. It has wide open hallways, and it's it's really more functional than North Belt Elementary School is. North Belt's been added on to a fair amount. Some of the older wings have passive ventilation systems where if you're walking down the corridor, you notice that there are holes in the intentionally in the 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 mason work, where the corridor is actually the the main HVAC system, and then it goes in through those holes. And so it was just designed differently. We have a performing arts wheel there now, we're very excited about, but we have to house it in two tents outside because of the situation with COVID, but also there's there's space concerns there. We all know from driving to that campus, there's no parking there. You have to often go through, or used to be church's chicken. It's very difficult to get there, and it's it's a very challenging car rider line situation also. And so we've done our best with safety vestibules and things like that there on the Beltway where it is. But at the end of the day, when you when you tour both campuses, and they both have a lot of maintenance needs, there's no question about that. But when you tour both campuses, North Belt certainly rises to the occasion of the next campus to be redone. And that population of students, in in my opinion, you know, is ready for that that next level campus, and we were able to take their pavilion money, what was their multipurpose room money, and purchase new land for them to pull them off the Beltway and have a more accessible, community-driven school that we are very excited about. The other thing I just want to mention is that the thing that sort of puts North Belt over the top is that as we have finished out some of our work on elementary school boundaries, North Belt is also part of relieving the crowding that River Pines and some of those campuses on that part of the district have experienced. So building both Lakeland and North Belt larger than they were allowed us to alleviate crowding and serve all of our students without an entirely additional campus. And so we've really tried to be efficient and think into And so we've really tried to be efficient and think into the future, not overbuild because excess capacity is expensive. And that also frees up a piece of land for this next bond study committee to contemplate an early childhood center in that part of our community, which would be highly utilized on a site where we don't need to build an elementary school anymore. So because of all of those reasons, we are very excited to provide new campuses for, for all those schools, but North Belt is the priority at this time.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, so I, because we had money in the bond for North Belt. We didn't take that money and use it and now we're going to tear it down. We're, we're going to, we used it to buy land, right?
Right. So when we knew or thought we knew that it was likely that North Belt would be in the next bond as a completely replacement because of the size of the campus, et cetera. We moved them, Nolan and his group moved them to multipurpose group four. So that we would have time to determine, once we knew that we were going, they were going to be a replacement campus from board building and planning. And we really started having that conversation about there's just no way to make that building come around. We used their multipurpose room money to actually buy the land that we would then, if possible, you know, we started this conversation years ago and joking about, you know, change in the couch cushions. Mike and I would be like, well, there's $5 for North Belt. And, and we literally were doing that because we didn't know the bid environment would be as favorable as it ultimately was. And so because of those things, we weren't really sure it was possible, but we knew that that was the vision that this district and this team has for the students at North Belt Elementary School. So we did not put money into their current campus for that reason.
Do you have the footprint that we're going to use?
Well, we'll do an architect selection interviews this week, we hope. And we'll see who is the one that moves forward and we have two different options as far as replications that will bring our cost down.
Okay, that's what I was.
I know that was the question. Yes. We are interviewing the two architects which, who have current prototypes on the books.
All right, anyone else? Not seeing any. We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor? Six oh, and we have a happy, happy principal in the audience, Ms. Christina Morris. I saw that sigh of relief coming through that mask. Oh, it happened. Yes. So congratulations. You're doing a great job there and this is going to be a tremendous asset to that community. All right. Moving to our next item, we have item seven, information items. These are information items. They're, they're for board discussion. There won't be any vote taken on any of these items tonight. So let's look at item seven A, report of limited English proficiency. Any questions, comments or concerns about that? Not seeing any. Item B, naming a district facility for Dr. Guy Sconzo. I want to kind of start this conversation because I know we have some guests in the, in the audience. We don't take naming a facility lightly. It doesn't happen often. We look at a, a whole basket of resume items, if you will. We look at tenure. We look at contribution, not only to Umla ISD, but the Umla ISD community, the state of Texas, education in general. As well as just the total body of work. You know, the kind of person they are and so forth, what they meant to individuals, staff, taxpayers, students, et cetera. I think that we can all agree that based on Dr. Guy Sconzo's resume, a district facility named after him is well deserved. Mr. Lopez, you worked as a board member longer with Dr. Sconzo than anyone else. I'd like to get your thoughts on this and ask you to begin the discussion and then we'll go around the table.
Sure. Kind of where to start? I always thought that, you know, this was a no-brainer that this was going to happen. That we were going to honor Dr. Sconzo by naming something after him. And the reason that I thought that it was a no-brainer is because the district wouldn't be where it is today without him, period. That's a fact. I've said it a lot and I'll say it again. Guy Sconzo was the right guy in the right place at the right time when he was hired to Umla ISD. The district was beginning its journey on massive fast growth. Kingwood was tearing itself apart because of the Kingwood High School was too big and parents wanted their kids to play sports. And we had all those issues and, and we even tried to pass a bond. This is when I first moved to the district, tried to pass a bond and it failed. And then Dr. Sk- and that's right when he got here effectively. And then it started smooth sailing with him. And, and, and we built so many schools and so many things and had so many problems that were just calmed by his leadership. And so and, and not only dealing with that, we also have to look at innovation, Quest Early College High School. And that idea was came from him and his team and we wouldn't have Quest without Dr. Sconzo, in my opinion. And you look at the house concepts and things like that. So I could talk about Dr. Sconzo all day. But I thought it was frankly no-brainer. But then I started getting emails from people that I haven't talked to in a long time. Stephanie Rosenberg is former G C said, hey, I want you guys to name it after a school, the new middle school. And then even Dan Huberty called me and said, hey, what's this about, you know, new middle school? And I think it was because it may have been mentioned as an idea. But it is my opinion that naming a, the new middle school of, you know, after Dr. Sconzo is not appropriate. And let me tell you why. It's not enough, in my opinion. He was never there for that middle school. He didn't help create that middle school. He did create, for example, if we want to name a middle school, for example, and this is not my vote, but if we want to give an example, we name, we changed Ross Sterling's name to Dr. Sconzo. He was here when that was created. He's the one that changed that from the ninth grade campus to a middle school. Got it running, got the money through the bonds and made it happen. So if we want to do a middle school, we name it after him. And of course Stallions would be the mascot for that middle school. But I personally think if we're going to name a school for Dr. Sconzo, we should change Quest's name. And it should be the, the Dr. Guy Sconzo Early College High School is what I think. If we're going to go the route of a George Turner name of a building facility for Dr. Sconzo, then I think we should name this building for Dr. Sconzo because this was his home base for his tenure here. Granted, he was mostly out and about visiting schools. But, you know, I think that's what we should do. And I always thought that this was going to happen, that we would have this discussion because I think we, we need to put some thought to it. Of course, which is most appropriate. But with COVID, I mean, I don't think we've had a public memorial for Dr. Sconzo yet because of all the COVID stuff. And so I figured that we would get it, the ball rolling then, but you know, you know, I'm glad and fine that we're having this discussion now. And so I think we as a board need to decide the best way to honor his memory and what he's done for this district and this community. And, and I know that there's some other discussions, you know, we've had, you know, you know, Dr. Say, you know, we haven't named anything after him, but Dr. Say is still around. And we kind of have a rule that you don't name a building after somebody who's still around. We call that the Jim Eggers rule. And when we were deciding to name Ross Sterling and it's just tragic that the rule came into play when he died. But, and then, you know, we have Burton, who's a former superintendent, that's something we can talk about as well. I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with the history with him. But I do know that Dr. Sconzo played a critical role at a critical time for this district and he needs to have. I think we should show our appreciation for that with something that's larger than a new middle school in the neighborhood that's going up, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. We'll just go down the line. Ms. Morrison?
Well, I want to agree with Mr. Lopez. You know, Dr. Sconzo was larger than life. I remember when he came into the district, of course, I was one of his principals when he came down. And the one thing he brought forward that I will never, ever forget is family. He built us as a family. And so needless to say, and I'm not sure where we can put one of those ties Diane. But I mean, really, all can aside, because I agree with you Keith, I, I think it, but it's, it's naming the right building for him. Because he was so very special. Those trips to the school and him visiting all the kids. So naming one school for him is, to me is difficult. Because he, he was loved by all schools and loved by all people. And he was such a communicator in our community. Like I say, I go back to that larger than life. Because he always had a smile and he always had those, those ties. Again, our, and you know, he would walk in with his supports on and his tie and he was, you know, bigger than bold, as the old saying goes, but definitely I agree with you. The conversation of naming something after him is most definite. It's just, I would caution all of us to look at his life as a whole in education and put his name on the right building. And it's good to see all of you tonight. I remember you all. And because for someone like Dr. Guy Sconzo and how he related to the state. And I had the good fortune to work with him when he was working with fast growth, growth schools. And I learned so much because he was always a teacher too. He taught all the time. He taught us all things. So let's just be very careful in, in naming the right building.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Scarfo?
Mrs. and I'll, I'll pass for now. I've talked a lot about this on this topic. So what other buddy, everyone else over there say first or?
Ms. Lamond Dixon?
Um, well, I'd like to say I definitely think we should name a district facility after Dr. Sconzo. I agree with a lot of the suggestions that Keith, Mr. Lopez, I don't know why I'm calling everybody their first name tonight, but sorry, habit. But I, I agree with a lot of the suggestions that Mr. Lopez made tonight. I remember him well, you know, throughout the years I've lived in the community far longer than I've served on the school board. He was a beloved leader in our district and in the community. He was kind, warm, very friendly person. Always greeted everyone with a smile, just amazing man. You know, out of those suggestions, personally, I like the, the Quest idea, honestly. But I do think we need to just look at, you know, he was larger than life. So what does that, what is that perfect fit? Where we need to address naming something after him. And I, I think it's warranted. I think we should do it. And I look forward to the continued conversation surrounding it.
Thank you. Ms. Timmy?
So I did not get the pleasure of being able to serve on the board under Dr. Sconzo. But I actually credit him with me being able to sit here today. It is Dr. Sconzo that first got me involved in the school district. And I have many fond memories of him and his leadership. We actually met under a situation where we were in opposition to each other on an idea. But he, I will never forget, he invited me into his office here in this very building. We sat down, we had a wonderful, warm, friendly conversation where he was truly interested in finding a compromise. It was, he was not there. He didn't invite me in to pacify me on an issue. He, he brought me in to find a solution. And, and we did that. And I will always remember him for the way he treated me and how well he treated me. We lived, I had not met him before, but we lived not too far from each other. And I, after that, would see him occasionally in the community. And he remembered my name, even though we only had met a couple of times years earlier, he remembered my name. He made me feel warm, welcome. He would always come up and greet me with a hug. And when I mentioned to him that I was considering service on the board, he encouraged me and gave me advice and was very warm in that respect. So as a leader and as a human, he is most certainly lives up to the high standards that we would attach to naming a facility after him. I do want to say that as a general matter, I do have some reservations about naming schools after people. Just, just in general, this, this has absolutely nothing to do with Dr. Sconzo and, and his commitment and his service to the district. But just as a general matter, the naming of schools, and I feel that we, you know, we do have two schools named after people. Those were schools that were named many years ago. All of our new schools have been more reflective of their community and not of an individual person. And so that's my concern. My concern is setting precedent that will be followed by future boards that none of us will be a part of. That we, you know, continuing to set the precedent, you know, of, of schools being named after a person. So I am, I'm very open to the idea of this building as where he was housed and he had a lot of input into this building. Now I will say, if we were going to go the route of a high, of a school, I do believe that Quest is more appropriate. In fact, when he was working on Quest as a project, he actually went and visited Booker T. Washington High School in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And, and used it as inspiration, as a, as a guide on several of the things. That's the high school that I went to. I graduated from that high school. And so, you know, Dr. Sconzo and I had many conversations about Quest and, and, and it Booker T. and using that as, as inspiration. So I do agree that, that that would be a more appropriate school. But I just want to mention that I have just a general overall philosophical reservation about going down the path of naming schools after people. So that's why I wanted to mention this building as, as an option.
Thank you, Ms. Timmy. Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think making this a little complicated and I, I don't agree with. Well, first, let me say the issue of setting a precedent. I'm not concerned about that because I think in the case of Dr. Sconzo, and I don't know if it was Mr. Sitton who mentioned resume of accomplishments and impact. And I, I think that really is there and it's a very high bar. So it's not just because somebody's a volunteer in the community and did for a number of years and, you know, they had some impact. I think the things he did, that, that's a real high bar. So I'm not concerned about that. And as far as future boards go, I mean, that's their prerogative. Any board can do what they think is the best thing to do and set their own precedent. So I, I'm not really worried about any of that and I don't think any of us should be. But I'll say, I, I think because Mr. Lopez, you said kind of two different things. You didn't think middle school was a big enough deal, but I, I certainly don't think the Quest Early College High School or this building. I know Dr. Sconzo spent his time here when he office, he office in this building, granted. But I, this is not an impressive place. No offense to anyone, but it's, it's really not. And, and I just don't think this building or the new early college in terms of the size is really. is really, is big enough. I really don't think it's big enough. And the reason I had, when I first made this initiative or proposal, gosh, almost a year now, I talked about the middle school, and I'll, I'll say this, Mr. Lopez, one of the things, many legacies Dr. Sconzo has left us, great things, and the whole idea of why we, we are so far above, ahead of the curve all the time, it's, it's the methodology we got into, but that's something that really he brought to the district about going out there, and I think Dr. Brown could tell you, say, hey, we need land, we got to go, go get it now, we got to, and Mr. Korea could tell you, and we do that, and it's a great thing, because it really puts us in a good position. So you, you talk about that site, well, that was his, something that he pushed about, hey, we could build an elementary and a middle school on the same site, and at Middle School 10, isn't that where, it's on that, and I'm looking to Mr. Korea just to confirm, we're, we're river, I'm sorry, I want to call it river, I would say river, we got all rivers and woods, you know, so, but where that is, so, and, so I think that, that's appropriate in that sense, too. But what I liked about the middle school idea was that, that's, he spent a lot of his early time in middle school, being a principal for middle school, being an assistant superintendent who had a deal with middle schools, and he always had a fondness for middle school. He, he always would lament for the teachers who had to be teaching, because that's an age group, that's really tough. But I know it was near and dear to his heart, and, and if you ever listen to him talk about, about those things. So that, that was a reason for middle school, and that's the new one that we're putting up, and, yeah, Ross Sterling, and that's an idea, but I guess I look and say, well, you know, that's kind of far down the road, because we're probably not going to do another bond till 22, whatever, and so then by the time you get there, and then by the time you do that, so we're talking, you know, it could be four years down the road, and I, I don't know, it just kind of loses, I think, loses a little impact, because it's sometimes, you know, you, you do things that they're, they're relevant now, and, and why I, I would suggest and ask that everyone consider that we, we move forward, and that this is an opportunity for us to honor him in this way, in a big way. And, and I think there's a lot of meaning to it for a lot of the things I mentioned, and a lot of the things he brought to the district, because we still, you know, when he came, we, we grew over 60% in the time he was, he was there, I mean, the high schools doubled, it went from three to six. And he used to like to say, and someone reminded me, as I forgot, but one of his favorite sayings was he described the growth of the district over a lot of his, you know, time there as going from Mayberry to Metropolis, and, and that's, that's a pretty good analogy, but keeping that community, that, that friendliness, that neighborly feeling of Mayberry. And I think we all talk about what, what, one of the great things about this district is that family attitude, and, and Dr. Fagan refers to it all the time, and she's, over the last five years, she's taken it to another level, but, but it's, it's what he started, she's doing a great job to, because it's important, and I think she sees that and, and saw that early on, and continues to foster that. So there, there's a lot of those legacies, and, and you look at how Dr. Sconzo was respected across the state and even nationally with, he was the first superintendent to be called to testify when we were suing, suing the state back in, what was that, oh, 10 or 11, whatever, whenever, so things like that. So, I mean, there's, I, I think, again, it's a real high bar, so we don't have to be too concerned about setting a precedent. And I, I've said why I think this is, this is a good, good choice. And, you know, I, I, look, I'm open, but I just think it, it's something we, we need to do, and we need to do more now than, you know, three or four years down the road, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. So first, I would like to say thank you for sharing about Dr. Sconzo's history and connection to middle schools. I did, I was not privy to that information, but what I wanted to say, just being on the Building and Planning Committee, the one reason I was liking the idea of Quest is because, because of the connection, you know, he came, he brought the early college idea to, to the district. But, I mean, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see it, I don't know if we've shared it with the full board, but like, the new Quest facility is truly, truly going to be an amazing high school. And then the other thing is the, just generally speaking, in education, that, that, when you have a, like a high school, for instance, high school names get out across the state all the time. Like, so to me, if you're going, you know, middle school, yes, you know, middle school's wonderful, and I get the connection, but for this beautiful new facility for Quest, I think it would be a great connection, it's going to be lovely, they're going to have their own high school, and just think of all the accolades that that school already gets, and now every time you hear that, you would hear Sconzo High School, Sconzo High School. I just think it's, it's a, it's a beautiful fit. I just wanted to share my opinion, I know we're not voting tonight.
I'm not saying.
Let's, let's hang on.
I was just going to say, would we drop the Quest name, or are you saying that, or it would just be?
Yeah, I was saying, I mean, you know, however it falls with the board, but my thought would be to change the name to Sconzo High School, Sconzo Early College High School, I'm sorry. And to me, that would carry more weight throughout the state for, in many ways, so, just a thought.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Lopez.
Ms. Lamond Dixon stole my thunder, all my notes, she just said, I just wanted to say that. And I also want to say that if, if we want to change the middle school name of Ross Sterling, we can do that tomorrow. We've got the money to change the name and, and change it, and knowing that in three or four years, you're going to have a gigantic, beautiful facility for that school as well, that's going to be brand-new and so on and so forth. But it's not like I'm suggesting if, for, you know, throwing the options out there, and these, and look, these options are just things I thought about, and, and that I thought were appropriate. And also like Ross Sterling, because you've got Turner Stadium Complex with Umbel High School, which is our namesake high school, and it's all right there, and the traffic that it gets, and it's kind of, you know, I want to, you know, people will see Guy Sconzo Middle School, you know, that's, that's kind of the whole purpose of naming something after him. We don't want to shove it in a neighborhood off Beltway where no one sees it. And so those are my thoughts, and so those are, and, and I know we're not voting tonight, but that's my prerogative, but I, my number one choice, I will say this, is Quest, renaming it Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School.
All right. Anyone else? Dr. Fagan, would you like to make some comments before I make the final comments?
Sure. I just wanted to say, well, thank you for being here tonight, all of you, and, you know, I had a quiet little entrance into the district. It was, it was just like so under the radar, and I remember coming here the next morning after the board meeting and went to Dr. Sconzo's conference room, which ultimately became my conference room, I wasn't really sure that day, but, but he was so calm, and he sent out a note to the principals, right there, he constructed it right there, you know, and it was something like, stop running around your buildings and sit down just for a second, and, you know, this is what's going on, it's going to be fine, and he, you know, we, we knew each other just like in passing, right? But he had all of this credit with, of course, with every campus and the community and the staff, and I was, I was so amazed how he just sort of lended that to me in the moment. You know, he just sent that out and, and said, you know, this is all going to be okay, and, you know, and, and that meant so much to me, because he didn't know me, and all he knew is that there was this huge eruption, you know, that one like the district had never seen before, by the way, you're welcome, and, you know, we've grown up, right? It's, it's a little less Mayberry after that day, but, but nonetheless, he was, he was generous with his position, and he was generous with his, I don't even know how to explain it, but when you're feeling like the underdog in a really big way, in a place where nobody knows you, and, and, and this person who has all the credibility in the world lends you a piece of that, it really goes a long way in demonstrating character, and the kind of character that we want every single Umbel ISD student to aspire to have. And so I just want to say that I'm very happy that, that this board is having this conversation. I think it's an important choice, I don't think it's one that, that Dr. Sconzo or, or any of us would just, oh, yeah, just anything, you know. And so I appreciate the, the conversation and the real examples and the rationale behind each idea, because I think that is what's most important, is that it's about a piece of a legacy, and I'm certainly not voting in, in any way, but I'm very proud that Nolan and Mike and Trey and all of us that have had the opportunity, Dr. Brown, Terry Perkins, that Quest finally does have a home of its own. I mean, Dr. Sconzo had to work really hard to move that campus from place to place to place to place, to make sure it was viable and it had a place to be, and paint the walls green, and whatever we got to do, right? We got to make it go. And he did that time and time and time again, whether it was Lone Star or Tassita, whether it was at Umbel High School, whether it was at Summer Creek High School, you know the story, but he put his, that same generosity and that same support he gave to me in that day, he put behind that campus, he believed in it so strongly, what it could do for kids, and that it was something different and unique and special and innovative, and today, it's one of the highest-performing early college high schools in the state of Texas. It is a point of pride, it is something that we are so happy we offer at Umbel ISD, and so I, I'm thrilled that it, they will have their own beautiful home that they deserve, and I think that he would be thrilled about that, too. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Okay, I'll kind of end, end the conversation here, and with some, some parting notes and, and future discussion items. You know, I was, you know, almost 11 years ago now, I was on the board of the Education Foundation, and I was, well, do I run for the school board, do I not run for the school board? And I'll never forget, we were in a foundation executive board meeting, and, and I said, I'm not going to run. This is where I belong, we're, we're doing great things with the Education Foundation, and he goes, hang on. Yes, we're doing great things with the Education Foundation, but think about how many lives you can touch being on the school board, and think about the difference you can make in this entire community that you grew up in, being on the school board. That singular conversation forced me to take another look in the mirror and decide to run for the school board, and that was over 10 years ago. I'm going to ditto a couple of things that, that Dr. Fagan said, because every time I would get frustrated, I would call him, I'd say, Doc, you wouldn't believe this. He goes, yeah, I would believe it. He said, but let me tell you this, this too shall pass. Every single time, this too shall pass. He was such an even-kill. You know, Diane, you, you, you don't get the credit that you deserve, because I know he would come home and vent to you, because he would not vent in public. I'll never forget the, the situation we had for roughly 14 consecutive board meetings. We had a member of the community would come in and do a PowerPoint presentation, and the one that stands out in my mind more than anything, he puts a map of the state of Texas up on our big board there, and there were stars all over it, you know, probably, probably eight, nine, 10 stars on there. And he, from that podium, he looked at Dr. Sconzo, and he said, Dr. Sconzo, you know what this map represents? Of course, we didn't answer, and he goes, well, let me tell you what it represents. Every one of those stars are open superintendent positions in the state of Texas. If you need help, I'll help you with your resume. And he just kind of grinned and let the gentleman finish his talk and go on, and we walked to the back, and I said, how, how do you not say anything? And he goes, he goes, Robert, this too shall pass. We will all outlast him, and we did. So with that said, there's been several, several conversations, several comments, all extremely worthwhile. I think, again, we can all agree that the bar is very high on this, and that naming a facility is, that's, that's a foregone conclusion. Which is the right facility? I don't know. I want everyone to take the, the next month and think about it, between now and our next board meeting. There's been a couple of suggestions, Quest, Early College High School, the new school, a middle school number 10, this particular building, where he, where he called home, and potentially even Sterling Middle School. Sterling Middle School, again, like Mr. Scarfo said, is, is not brand-new today, but it will be. You know, Mr. Lopez mentioned that you could name it today and, and know that it's going to be a brand-new building in the future, so, you know, there's some, there are several options here, several opportunities, and what I'd like for you all to do is, is, this was a discussion, and I appreciate everyone's words, and I'm sure the family does, too. And, and when, leading up to the next board meeting, Dr. Fagan and I will work on an agenda item that we can put out and, and revisit this, and potentially vote on, on, on one of the items. Don't know what that's going to look like right now, because there has been several, several options that have been mentioned, so think about it, think about it, get with Dr. Fagan, and give her your thoughts, and, and then we'll look at what that agenda item needs to look like for next month. Okay? All right. Let's go to item 7C, Proposed Revisions to CE Regulation. Any questions? All right. Not seeing any. Item 7D, Financial Services Reports. We've gone through all the audit and all that stuff tonight, so I don't, I don't think we, we will have any questions there, so, all right. Any, we've already got one item for consideration at the next board meeting. Anyone else have any other topics for consideration in the future board meeting? All right. Not seeing any. It is 8:48. We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.